Please let the record reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Vice Chair Ritchie, who's asked to be excused. This evening, we're very excited to see that we have a Boy Scout troop in the audience. It is Troop 174, and we've invited them to come up and conduct our Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to step on up to the podium, right up here. It's right in front of this mic, right here.
On their way up, it might be nice to notice that they are all in uniform. That's kind of a nice thing.
Yeah, you bet.
You look sharp, young man.
Okay, go ahead. You can ask us to rise if you'd like to.
Can everybody rise for the flag? Repeat with me the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two, the audience may be seated.
Thank you so much. Hey, before you sit down, do you each want to introduce yourselves and tell us, well, I know you're probably working on a badge tonight, or anything else you'd like to say about yourself, like what grade you're in?
I'll start down the row. James, how about you go first, then we'll start down the row.
My name is James Sorensen, and I am in ninth grade.
Welcome.
My name is Taz Norton, and I am in eighth grade.
I'm Porter Lewis. I'm a sophomore at Ogden High, and I like doing sports.
Awesome.
I'm Ethan Reeves. I'm in eighth grade, and I like playing baseball.
Awesome. And would you like to introduce yourself, the scout leader?
Yes, I'm the assistant-
Oh, on the mic, if you don't mind, we have people online that can't hear otherwise.
Sweet. I am the assistant scoutmaster for Troop 174, and we're all from the Ogden East Area.
Awesome. Well, welcome. Thank you again so much for coming and for conducting the pledge for us.
Thanks.
And as they're being seated, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you so much. And up next, we have acknowledgements. I know that Councilmember Hare had an acknowledgement he'd like to-
I do. Chair, it's with a little bit of a heavy heart that I bring this up, but I think it's, you'll see why I did it. Kenneth Alford, who was kind of near and dear to the city, passed away Friday, and but he was a remarkable man in that he volunteered so much of his time and his life. It was kind of who he was. I want to talk about just a few things that I think are noteworthy. Says his service to the nation included 35 years in the U.S. Air Force Reserve Officer, retiring as Lieutenant Colonel in 1990. He served as a navigator on a WB-50 and C-119 and C-124 aircraft in the 733 Troop Carrier Squadron. He was recalled to active duty during the 1962 Missile Crisis, Cuban Missile Crisis, and flew numerous missions over several decades to Vietnam, the Philippines, Guam, Wake Island, Hawaii, and Europe. And he was always a proactive advocate for Ogden. His civic contributions include serving six years in the Utah State House of Representatives from District 7, eight years on the Ogden City Council, four of those years as Council Chairman, several years as a member of the Ogden City Planning Commission, and as President of the Ogden Pioneer Chapter of the Sons of Utah Pioneers. And he was also a founding member of the Hill Aerospace Museum Board. He had a proactive and long-lasting influence on thousands of students in Ogden City schools, where he served 30 years as a geography teacher, assistant principal, principal of Hellcrest Elementary School, principal of Central Junior High School, principal of Mount Ogden Junior High School. And on the district staff, he was a charter member of the Ogden School District's Foundation. And while he served so much in public service, he gave equally as much to his church and many, many service opportunities that he filled in his church. And he will be missed by many, and I think our city is weaker because of his loss, but much stronger because of his life.
Thank you so much for the acknowledgement. If only, I mean, if only I could accomplish that much in my life. That's amazing.
Yeah, when I was trying to just add it up, his daughter called me Saturday morning, and I said, I need to kind of get a comprehensive understanding of what this man has done in his life, and it's remarkable. I hope the girl can be like him.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah.
Incredible. Any other acknowledgements from the council members? Okay, we'll move on with the approval of minutes. We have the joint work session of January 10th, 2023. Councilmember Blair?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have reviewed those and found them to be accurate.
And the work session of February 7th, 2023. Councilmember Hare?
Yes, I've reviewed those, and they're to the best of my recollection.
And the regular meeting of February 7th, 2023. Councilmember Lopez?
Yes, Chair, I reviewed the meetings, and I found them to be accurate to the best of my recollection.
And the work session of March 7th, 2023. Councilmember Nadolski?
They're good.
Awesome. And the regular meeting of March 7th, 2023. Councilmember White?
Yes, Chair, I have read those and found them to be accurate, and I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember White and a second from Councilmember Blair to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. Great. So we have up next, the public hearing, the Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Action Plan Amendment Number One. And we're happy to welcome both Kathy Fuentes, the Senior Community Development Coordinator, and Jeremy Smith, the Community Development Manager. Welcome.
Hi. Happy to be here today to talk to you about our Annual Action Plan Amendment One for Fiscal Year 24. We, just to bring you as a reminder, every five years, we do a consolidated plan, also known as a CON Plan. This is our application to HUD for two federal grants, CDBG and home grants. It also uses a strategic planning tool to help us identify housing needs, community development, and economic development needs here in the city. It also outlines what the city plans to do with those HUD funds for the next five years. So every five years, we do that. Every year, we do an annual action plan. This is specific goals that are set up for the year ahead. So we came to you just before the beginning of the fiscal year and have the annual action plan approved. This was the individual action plan for the fourth program year of that five-year period. This also helps determine the programs and projects that will be funded. It details a budget for those funds and describes the goals for the use of those HUD funds through the year. And as we've done in the past, throughout the fiscal year, occasionally, we come to you with an amendment to that action plan. This is basically for two purposes. It revises our estimates that we set up when we did the action plan. We come to you with the actual numbers, and it also gives us an opportunity to update any program or goals, changes that need to be done. So for this amendment, we will be talking about revising the budget carryover for estimates to actual and updating the home, CHODO, and admin budgets for the program requirements. We're also increasing the Own and Ogden Program Budget to $600,000 and increasing our goal from 25 to 50 down payment assistance loans. The summary of that looks like this. The HUD budget would ultimately decrease by $34,385. Those changes reflect, are basically what I talked about before, where we're taking the estimates and giving, coming back with the actuals that we've had so far this fiscal year. That's a $1,366,215,000 increase in program income. That's the updated program income, excuse me, estimates that we expect for the remainder of the fiscal year. It's a decrease of $1,609,800 in carryover and then a $200,309 increase in program income carryover, the program income funds received in the prior year, but not spent before the end of the last fiscal year on June 30th. And this is the summary of all the changes in the Community Development Division. What we were looking at here is the Own and Ogden Program, as I mentioned, would increase $350,000. That goal would then also increase from 25 to 50 down payment and assistant loans. Not proposing any change to the Emergency Home Repair Program. The Target Area Public Improvement Program would decrease by $172,324. Our CHODO, Community Development Housing Organization, would increase by $59,856. The Federal Funds in the Quality Neighborhoods Program would decrease by $60167. Our HELP, which is a non-federal-funded program, would increase by $30,513. No change to the Home ARP Allocation Plan. Our CDBG Home ARP Admin Funds would increase by $212,370. The overall community development total for this amendment would be an increase of, or would be, not an increase, but the budget would be $7,747,598. For the Business Development Division, there would be no change to the Special Economic Development Project, Small Business Loan Program, or Micro Enterprise Loan Programs. There would be an increase in the CV Business Recovery Fund of $180,607. The CV Business Recovery Fund for Micro Enterprise would be decreased by $34,376. There would be an increase of $196 for the CDBG CV Admin. And the Business Development Total Budget would be $1,531,595. As far as our program changes, as I mentioned, our Own and Ogden Program currently has a budget of $250,000 worth of home money in it. That would, that goes for 25 down payment assistant loans. Our proposal is to increase this budget to $600,000 for the current fiscal year. $500,000 of home funds will be used, and additional $100,000 of home match funds would be used for this. That increases our goal to 50 down payment assistant loans for the fiscal year 24. And also, something we need to revise is we are proposing to adopt HUD's 2023 Home Ownership Value Limits. HUD Home Ownership Value Limits are set by HUD and limit the maximum purchase price for home-funded housing projects. The Annual Action Plan 24, we adopted the Home Value Limits from a 2022 Housing Market Study that we conducted. HUD has now published their Home Value Limits for 2023, and that has increased now the value limit to $428,000 for a single-family home. So we're proposing that in this amendment, Annual Action Plan Fiscal Year 24, that we adopt HUD's 2023 Home Ownership Value Limits. And as a certification, part of this amendment, we also need to certify that CDBG and CDBG CV require that we declare that the Annual Action Plan, that there's an LMI benefit certification. This includes at least 70% of expenditures in this period to benefit LMI residents and no more than 30% of expenditures to urgent need and RSA housing benefit, preventing, eliminating slums or blight. And so it is proposed that a one-year CDBG overall LMI benefit certification period, no less than 70% of CDBG and CDBG CV expenditures are to benefit LMI persons.
I feel bad for you when you just have to say this-
Lots of acronyms. Awesome numbers and acronyms here. So this is just the schedule of where we've been and where we are. So the public comment period started September 16th, went through October 17th, which is today. We had a city council work session a couple of weeks ago on October 3rd. Tonight is the public hearing to adopt on October 17th, and then it will go into effect tomorrow, once approved, and that this amendment goes until the year-end, the fiscal year on June 30th. And that's my presentation.
Okay, any questions from council members or discussion before we have the public hearing?
Okay.
Great, thanks so much. Okay, for those of you here in the audience, this public hearing is about this item alone. So you'd be welcome to step up to the podium, state your name for the record, and make comment of three minutes or less. And if you're online on the Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand, and you'll be able to do the same.
Chair, since I see no-
There's one hand online, I apologize.
Oh, it just came up. Okay, sorry about that.
I think we'll go online. I see no movement in the chamber. To Angel Castillo.
Good evening. Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. Right out of the gate, I'm going to suggest that I'm sure you will approve the changes that are part of our program. But as we all know that we have some housing challenges and we have some real barriers to overcome for people being able to purchase homes, we are still doing the same thing that we've been doing for the last six years. And while this is not the fault of the staff, they're doing their job, operating within their parameters, many of you have made statements about getting projects where people can purchase homes. And while we cannot control the free market and the increasing rates of single-family homes, we need to do something different, and we need to do something different with our existing property and leverage our relationship with developers to try new and different things. So I'm encouraging you, after you approve this, to continue those conversations and look to the state, look to the county, look to our surrounding neighbors, and see what they're doing and see what we can do differently, because we've been doing the exact same thing without change. It took us two years to get the HUD limits to match what had actually happened with our market. And so we're being reactive as opposed to proactive. And I'd also like to request that you, as a council, really dig into and look at the metrics of what we've been doing for the last six years versus what we're doing now. And I'm not so sure as a citizen that I'm satisfied with a handful of homes, less than 20 homes being put on the market that people can afford, and in some cases, within that it's like five homes, or we're going to do six homes. If we want to do something different, if we want a breakthrough result to allow people to have access to homeownership, I'm asking you as a citizen to come to the table, to work with your departments, to work with the county, and work with the state, to look at alternative solutions, because what we're doing now isn't going to change anything. And we have great programs, but they're set up a couple of years ago. They're not meeting the current needs that we have now. And so I'm asking you to look to find in the cycle where the restriction is and come up with solutions to remove those restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments either here in the audience or online?
Chair, seeing no hands online, seeing no movement in the chambers, I would make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item.
Second.
The motion from Councilmember Hare, a second from Councilmember Nadolski to postpone the public hearing. In favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any discussion? I would love, Jeremy, would you mind talking to us a little bit about anything new that's in the plan as compared to past six years?
So I apologize. So you're referring to the CON Plan. So every five years, we do a new CON Plan. So you're asking what the difference is to be for that?
Just in regard to the comment that the constituent made about us doing the same thing over and over again.
Okay. Well, our program has been consistent as far as tried and tested, you know, what we've done with these, with this federal money. HUD's very particular about the use of their funds, and so being creative with them is a challenge. So they pretty much outline what you're eligible to do with these. We feel like we've really set up programs that do reach out to our citizens and provide opportunities for homeownership. You know, we, of course, would love to do more. We always would love to do more units, but, you know, the constraints, there's always money and land and all those things. So we are working to make sure we're providing as much opportunity for homeownership as possible. Our Own and Ogden Program, you know, consistently has been doing, you know, 25 to 50 down payment assistance loans a year. And so, you know, it's, this has been happening for a lot longer than six years. Kathy's-
Hi. Hi, everyone. Thank you for your consideration. I'm Kathy Fuentes, Senior Community Development Coordinator. So every five years, we do a five-year plan, and that does require a lot of data analysis, public engagement. So we do extra public meetings and outreach. And once that five-year plan is set, HUD requires us to stick to that plan. So we're just implementing what's done. So in the next five-year plan, we can revise our programs. If we wanted to revise a program now, we'd have to go through an amendment with our five-year plan. So it kind of, we know for five years, this is what we're going to be doing with our HUD funds, and that gives us the entitlement status, so every year HUD can approve our funding. So, thanks you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Chair, if I may too, just in a response to the constituent that called in, at least there are six or seven people that have new homes, that may not have had new homes. And so it may not be thousands and thousands and thousands, but at least to the people that do and are able to own those homes, it means something. And so I just want to also thank you for doing what you guys are doing.
Well, I'm very happy, on the one hand, for us increasing the amount of down payment assistance. I think that'll be great if it's still working, as we said it is now working. And then also the Home Value Limits increase, which I know we went through a process where we did reevaluate them ourselves, and now, of course, HUD is trying to catch up, although that's really challenging. So I do appreciate that. I also was kind of curious, so I know that, for example, some of the newer homes that we built had like the capability to have ADUs in them right away, and I don't know if that's part of this plan too. Sometimes I get confused about where all the different projects lie or which buckets of money. But that's something new that we hadn't done in the past, right?
Yeah, and I can speak to that. So that's something that's just coming online. That actually isn't something that we've done with this program, with our federal money. So that's, we have a new development up on Quincy where we're building seven new homes in there. They'll all, the plan is to have them all ADU-ready, so they could be easily put ADUs in those, and those plans are in place right now.
I don't see any more questions. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Chair, I've got a, I sent each of you some links to articles that I think, you know, at least from my perspective, we have been kind of handcuffed and untied by state law, state regulation, and it also, as I've learned, the developers have been a little bit struggling with this idea. And these two articles, and I'm sure there's many, many more, but I think we needed to start a discussion amongst ourselves as to how we use our political capital, if it will, to affect change at a state level. Those two articles, if any of our constituents want to read them, this one called "The Housing Market Needs More Condos: Why Are So Few Being Built"? That was published by Urban.org. And then there was another one, "Why Seattle Builds Apartments But Vancouver British Columbia Builds Condos"? And that was a little older. That was in Sightline.org in 2017. But both of those articles kind of explain some of the tax implications and reasons developers do what they do. And I think if we can maybe lobby our state legislators with some real solutions, certainly I don't think we're the only community that's trying to figure out how to come up with some product that people can buy and start to develop personal wealth. Anyway, just, that's a response to our comment. I just want our people to know that we are very mindful and pretty motivated to find solutions to the problem of only rentals going in. So, anyway, just wanted to say that.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks for sharing those articles. If there's no more comments or discussion, I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
Well, with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2023-19.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hare, a second by Councilmember White, to adopt proposed Resolution 2023-19, and this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Chair Chaburka?
Aye. That passes, thank you. And I'm really looking forward to, we're going to be setting up a work session, you know, where we can talk about some of the different types of challenges that we're having in this space too, so I'm really looking forward to that. Okay, up next, we have a report from the administration, the consideration of the appointment of Lisa Stout as the Management Services Director for Ogden City. And we welcome Mayor Mike Caldwell to present, and then we will have a public input period after his presentation.
Well, thank you very much. I don't know how many more opportunities I'm going to have to present to this.
I can call you up every week, if you want.
You can call me up. I don't know that I'll attend. I still have, at the end of the day, some form of self-discretion. But it's an honor for me to be here today and to present to you for the Management Services Director, Lisa Stout. We had a work session last week, and we've had an opportunity to answer and ask a lot of questions and everything else, but I felt it was really important to me to be here to say thank you to Lisa for what she has done for our city, for our budgeting, for everything else. She has been an outstanding employee for a long time, and it is my honor. You've read her resume. I'm not going to read that or regurgitate it or anything else, but Lisa Stout, you've been amazing for the city. You've been a phenomenal employee, confidant. You've listened to all the budget retreats and everything else that we've had, and you've given us great direction on that. And it is my great honor to present Lisa Stout as Mara's great replacement as the Management Services Director. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but we are honored to have gone through a process and everything else to identify the skills needed and everything else, and she has been outstanding on all of those levels.
Any questions for the mayor? Comments?
No questions, just a comment of agreement. Lisa's been one of those employees that I've gotten to work with for my entire tenure, eight years. I've never known her to be anything but just laced with integrity. Every single time we ask a question, you have the answer. You never try and spin it one way or another in order to influence our decision. You give us the straight facts. And of all the employees, I've always felt like you have had to kind of take the short end of the stick. There's just, you have to wait until the end of the meeting. You have to stay late. You have to come to so many meetings because so many of our decisions impact budget, and I've always been looking for a way to reward you for all those hours. So I'm excited to see your name put forward. So I thank you, Mayor, for selecting Lisa for tonight.
Agreed, yeah, definitely. You know, I just respect Lisa so much. I know that we did get some comments from constituents about why do we need to put this in place now when we have a pending change in administration? And I know you talked to us a little bit about that, but would you like to make a statement about that?
I think the role that that position plays is hypercritical. And not to lean on your Boy Scout influence, Rich, but I always want to leave a place better than I found it. And I think what she brings in- And I think what she brings in, and as we went through the whole process of evaluating people, skill sets, knowledge, ability to do all the internal things. And you can vote it down if you disagree. But I do believe we are leaving the city in a far better place than we found it with Lisa and her experience and her background and everything else. So that's my goal in this. People can play politics with that if they want and say, well, we should wait and we should do this, we should do that. This is the best person for this position, and I'm presenting that for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Am I just, I have a comment?
Oh, yeah, please. Question or comment?
So there's not very many people that can, and I was just writing down, that can understand HR, finance, treasurer, information technology, recorder, fleet and facilities, the justice court, then go to marketing, and then diversity and sustainability. And I think you found the right person to be able to lead all of those departments. And it's not very often that you can find someone that can understand all those departments. And so Lisa's that great person that will be able to do that. And I just look forward to working with her more.
Can I take a moment of personal privilege?
Absolutely.
I agree with everything that was just said. And having been in it when I came in, having not been on the council or anything else, having that kind of a background and other people that know how it works is such a comfort. And so, I mean, honestly, I really do want this to be a gift to whoever comes in the next administration and for the next council and everything else, because that experience really matters. And that's what I'm presenting to you and what I'm thanking Lisa Stout for having provided for so long.
Thank you. Thanks so much, Mayor.
Comment? Chair?
Oh, please, go ahead.
I also, you know, Mayor, you've taken a little heat about some of the appointments that you've presented. And, you know, I guess someone could argue something about that. But as you mentioned, it tends to be on the political side of things. But I appreciate your motive, you know, as the outgoing mayor. You're not going to be there after January. But you do put people in place that do have that stability. And as was mentioned, you know, Lisa's got, she checks all the boxes, but not just checks the boxes. I mean, there's the integrity, the personal work ethic that goes along with that woman. She's kind and easy to deal with. You know, so she's got some of those other things. And so if...
She's here in budget meetings. She's got some sharp teeth.
Sometimes you need, you need a little of that. But anyway, I just, my interactions with Lisa have always been very upbeat, very positive. I watched her come in. She's first one in, last one out. And when she does go out, she takes her job home. So I hope she takes a little time off for her family from time to time. But yeah, you picked well, and I appreciate that. And I salute you for that.
I appreciate that. And at the end of the day, there's not a person on this dais, or for the most part in this room too, that aren't here because they love our community and want to see good things happen here. And she's shown that quietly behind the scenes for a long, long time. And I expect that to continue in the future, so.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Anything else for me?
I don't think so. Thank you very much. And so next, we'd be happy to take public input about this item and this item alone. You can step to the dais here in the room and state your name for the record. And you have three minutes to speak. And if you're online, you can raise your hand to do the same. Welcome.
Good evening. Angel Castillo, Ogden residents. And once again, I really appreciate your commitment to accessibility by streaming these meetings so that when people have other commitments, like work, that they can listen along and participate. I really appreciate that. It's one of the things that you do very well. You have been consistent over the last six years with saying that you are committed to meeting people where they are in transparency. And you could have taken this all away after the pandemic, but you didn't. And so I'm very grateful for that because it allows everybody to be able to participate. I've watched Lisa since 2018 at all the meetings. She is a wonderful, lovely person. She has a great, kind, and gentle disposition. She has answers, and when she doesn't have answers, she comes back. I've seen people be a little pokey with her when looking for information. So there is no question at all that Lisa is a good person and does a good job. In sports and in business, however, when you're going to be putting together a roster for your new team, you have a tendency to wait until the draft comes up to have, pick your quarterback. And not to say that Lisa isn't a capable quarterback and not to say that Lisa wouldn't rise to the top of the cream, but we don't know what we're missing. We don't know what we don't know. There will be an administration change. Both of those people running for that position have very different outlooks. And it just doesn't seem appropriate to me to be able to make a decision about such a key position and then possibly put someone who is a dedicated and loyal employee in a position of taking a position and then possibly being removed from that position. We're talking less than 60 days. And so I just think that that's something that should be considered clearly. You know, you're going to appoint Lisa, but I think that we should be thinking forward instead of right here, right now, and making sure that you accommodate the administration that comes in because they're running because they want to change something. They're running because they believe that they can do better. And I would hate to see somebody taken, put into a position and taken out of the position. Again, absolutely, I have watched Lisa since 2018. And she is a fine person, but it's the same thing that we do with RFQs and RFPs. If we don't widely spread them, we don't know what we're missing. And so I encourage you to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments here in the room or on the Zoom meeting? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'll go ahead. Any other discussion or comments now that my time's up? Yes.
I'll be very brief. I just want to restate the comment that I made to Lisa when we had our closed session meeting. This is not private because I could say it here. It's not confidential. I just said that I, in the times when I've had the opportunity to interview proposed appointees, this is the first time that I never had a question really for Lisa. That's what I said. And I have big mouth, and I had nothing to say but praises for her. So thank you and congratulations for your proposed appointment.
Any other comments?
Yeah. Elephant in the room. I'm running for mayor. I'm one of the two. But so because of that, I've been asked probably more than anybody else about this in private. A lot of people have asked me about Lisa and if I think it's appropriate to wait. And I'll just tell, what I'll tell you is the same thing I tell them. If it wasn't Lisa Stout, I might have a concern. But I am working every day to make sure that I get to work alongside you, Lisa. And I want you on the team now. I want you on the team in the future. Thanks.
Yep, there's no other comments that I'd be...
One more comment. I was just looking at the posture down there, and she's got Coralie and Brandy and a lot of really good people supporting her in this. So she's certainly got support from key people, and I think that's key to make sure that... So ready to go.
So I just, I want to make a comment because I think one of the things, and I have grappled with that too. You know, there's only so many weeks left until the new mayor is elected. And I think one of the things that I realized, and it was actually when Mara Brown was appointed, and I went through that same grappling of now there's only a couple of months. And here's what I grapple with. And I just wanted to, I want to put this out there because I think in my head, why are we tamping down somebody to stay in a position because of fear that a new mayor may come in and change that person when that person really wanted this job? They applied for it. They went in with their eyes wide open to this job. They know that they can do the job. So what is it about us that says we should make sure that that person stays in a position that they're currently in because there may be change on the way? And I just think that that's just wrong when somebody thinks that they can do a job. They applied for the job, and they've made it through four or five people that interviewed quite a few people. And I just, it's not up to us to say what is their reason for applying for this job. It's their reasoning for why they applied for the job. And so that's where I'm at, even though that we may have a mayoral change and they may change your position. But she's going into it with her eyes wide open. And I just, it's not us, it's not becoming out of us to make that decision. So it's our decision if this is the right person or not, not whether she only has two weeks or three weeks in the job.
For sure.
And hopefully longer, but...
Yeah, especially because that job is so big. I mean, somebody's got to do it. Is Mara supposed to be doing both jobs right now? Or, you know, what's the?
No.
I don't think so, right?
No.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. So I agree with you too, because I've definitely grappled with that. And I honor their unwillingness to step into that position. And I hope I will do that one day too for different things. But, great. Well, I'd be happy to consider a motion.
Chair, I'd be happy to make that motion that we appoint Lisa Stout as Management Services Director for Ogden City.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hayer, a second by Councilmember Nadolski to consider the appointment of Lisa Stout as the Management Services Director for Ogden City. I don't know if there's any more discussion before we do the vote. And it's a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Chair Chaburka?
Aye. And that passes. Congratulations.
I think we had a call for a speech.
Would you like to make any comments? I'll ask you if she'd like to.
Thank you, Chair. I just would like to say how honored I am that you would put the faith and trust in me that you have. And I appreciate the opportunity I have had to work for the city. It's really been a labor of love for me. And I hope to continue to check those boxes and be someone with integrity that you can rely on for sound advice. I thank the mayor and the CAO for their faith as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lisa. Congratulations. Any other comments?
I want to share another thought that, in light of the discussion prior. So in my day job, I'd be, the closest equivalent in the city would be a department director. And I've told these guys the same thing. But we go through administration changes a lot in my work. Ultimately, we all report to a governor appointee, and the governor appointee appoints my director. And then the governor has to approve that. And I've been through quite a few administrative changes, and they're really nerve-wracking for the staff, especially for the department director level, where I don't have any employment protection. I work at the pleasure and the will of the director. And so being a father of two girls and young kids, just working to raise a family, still have a number of years in my career, it's nerve-wracking to go through that kind of change. And so as a workforce of about 600, we talk about the ebbs and flows of the politics. And we always hope that the politics don't dip down to us. But oftentimes, they do. But it's really important for an organization to maintain the consistency and the expertise that you have onboard. Just because the same people stay in the ranks doesn't mean that things can't change. We all have to pivot when our leadership changes. And as long as my leader is not asking me to do something that's unethical or illegal, that it's something that I think is responsible and that we can do, that's something that I want to help implement because that person is put in that position for a reason. So it shouldn't be any different here at the city. There are good people here. They're working in the direction that is provided to them by their leadership. And they're working with the empowerment and those sideboards that are given to them in their position. And as a city, I think that we would be a lot stronger and a lot more stable if we didn't wax and wane with the politics, but we could make improvements where improvements are needed for improvement's sake, not for political sake. And so when I consider this appointment, Lisa, I see you as someone who's open-minded, who's forward-thinking, who's willing to look outside of our own practices and to hear what new direction and new expectations might be provided and to want to find a way to make it happen, to find a way to make it work for Ogden. Because we're listening to people. They're giving us feedback, and it's overwhelming. And I'm going to need your help if I'm here with you to do that work. And that's not a political role. That's the role of a service-oriented person. It's someone who is a public servant in all that they do. And so I just think it's important we all remember, change doesn't require that we move people out and move new people in. Sometimes change requires that we have stability and consistency and expertise that knows how to make change happen too. So thank you for being that. Chair, do you mind if I say something?
Please.
I wasn't planning on it, but I find it interesting that we ask if there's any more discussion. Last week, when we brought you in, there was none. We were so like all in favor that there wasn't even need for discussion, which speaks volumes about the service you've provided during your years here. You said you started here and were able to come back, which is wonderful. So I applaud you being willing to accept this challenge and to be willing to help the city in any way that you can. And you've done that at every step, and I applaud the work that you've done. I feel very comfortable supporting you in this new role. And I know that you'll be willing, you'll help the city move forward again. You bring, as was mentioned earlier, this is nothing new. You bring a toolbox full of talents and knowledge and wisdom. And I'm thankful that we get to work with you at every capacity. And I'm thankful of the new role that you're going to be able to serve in. I do think, and Councilmember Hayer touched on it, but I do think it's wonderful. We've been able to go through some of this. And I don't know where it started or when it started, but I think it speaks volumes to the culture that we have here in the city that people come and support when someone does get promoted and when someone does move up. And I applaud the culture. And I've said it before, I don't think Mayor Caldwell gets the credit he deserves for the culture he's instilled, for the people he's put in the leadership roles and the team that he has assembled. And I applaud you. I applaud your team. And I applaud all of you for not only your love and commitment and passion for our city, but for your knowledge, your wisdom, your desire to improve our city. And so it's a wonderful combination. And I'm really, I speak for all of us up here. It's an honor to be able to serve side by side and to be able to watch and learn and learn from each of you. So I applaud Lisa tonight. I applaud all of you for all that you do throughout the year. And I applaud Mayor Caldwell for what you've been able to do during your tenure. We truly are a better city. This building is truly better served because, this residents are better served because of what all of you bring to the table and what all of you bring every day. So I thank you all, and I welcome you to this new position, and I'm super excited. I'm glad it's you. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you. I did want to say a couple of comments before we left the item. I did want to congratulate Lisa and as city comptroller. She really has a unique perspective into all of the city departments and really the heart of management services, well, using taxpayer dollars efficiently.
Well, the, it, using taxpayer dollars efficiently and effectively. And Lisa, coming from that position as a comptroller, really will be able to contribute the insight into, you know, being strategic, being, being a leader for all the city departments of just continuing that efficient and effective use of taxpayer dollars and running the, and you know, running the city well. And I did want to also publicly thank Brandy Johnson. She has been the acting Management Services Director since July 1st and has done an amazing job in addition to her position as the city treasurer. So I wanted to thank her for all that, that actually, she's the one that has done all the extra work in the last several months to, to keep that going and come to all the meetings and work with all the division managers and that, the breadth of divisions that you mentioned. So thank you, Brandy Johnson, for that extra work as well. We really appreciate you stepping up to do that. And that's all I wanted to say. So thank you, Council, for your, also your comments and your support for that appointment. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments? More discussion? Okay, great. Well, up next, we have public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding any concerns or ideas on any topic. You can step to the podium and state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Just to note that we do not have regular public comment in the redevelopment agency meeting following. So if you have any comments generally, you may want to make those comments now. Welcome.
I have a couple complaints.
Sure. Do you mind stating your name for the record?
David Crosby.
Okay.
I want, the cops won't give me no respect for nothing. The I've made a call, and I get the color of the stats. I have a three or four minute, five times or more recopling myself over and over again to dispatch to get anything done. Didn't they, I'd be lucky in five hours if they soap the house. And no, I get no respect from the police department at all. And then I had made a call today, did I get somebody help me, somebody called me on my phone over and over again? Cop won't even come out to the house and take a complaint. Won't even help me with some phone numbers or nothing. No, I can't do it, not my job. And no, I just want some respect, fair rights for, for me, like women get, you know? I don't get nothing, I don't get nothing out like that from the guys. Just some fair respect, you know? That's all I want. Somebody take, take me serious when I make a complaint or my car gets stolen or somebody stealing my car. Kind of taking the complaint right there on the spot instead of maybe wait five or six hours or do something at all. Another one, other complaint I have, is my, where I live on my, on Grant Avenue, the street's falling apart. Nobody wants to come fix the street or the streetlight at all. And it's just crumbling, the whole street is crumbling. And nobody take, take me serious, like I think I'm an idiot or something like that. I'm tired of being in this street, being treated like an idiot from all the city police department and the city. So I just want some, some comment. If you have any comments, let me know what you want, what I could do, what I can't do. Or comment from the council, if they have any council comments I can do.
Okay, I'm just trying to wait. I don't want to take up your time while I'm talking. Do you have anything else?
No, I just want some respect, that woman requests, request, like I want, you know, from police department in the city. Once I'm done, once I'm done. All right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe we can follow up with you after the meeting to get more information about which part of the street of Grant Avenue and other issues.
At 550, actually, 550 Grant Boulevard, that, that street right there, that falling apart, light don't work, street falling apart, and nobody want to come fix it.
Okay, we'll let the building, the public services now. Thank you. We can go online with Heath Sato.
Hi.
Hi.
Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I was a little frustrated earlier when a council member chose to use her time to make a disingenuous remark about something a constituent had said. That constituent that spoke to the housing issue thought that six or seven new homes wasn't enough, not that it was meaningless. I, I think anybody could have figured that out just from listening. That was not something that constituent ever implied, and quite the opposite, she merely thought we could do more. So it's kind of disappointing to see that. That said, I'd like to thank Councilmember Hare for speaking to some thinking outside of the box and recognizing that we could be doing more with working at the state level and looking outside of Ogden and even outside of Utah for solutions that we may not have even considered yet. I've, I've seen his growing concern for our housing situation and his willingness to work on it, so I'd like to thank him for that. Thanks, that's it.
Thank you. Any other comments here in the audience?
Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I too am thrilled that Councilmember Hare is collecting articles and looking into different ways of looking at housing. It is innovative thinking that is going to get us out of our problem. And there are plenty of other people who have similar challenges, and it's just figuring out what their widget looks like versus our widget and how we can take what they've learned and apply it here. And I, what Heath Sato just said is true. I mean, I 100% don't think that six homes is, you know, worthless. Yes, those lives were changed for six people, or those homes changed lives for six people. However, I know we can do better. And I'd like to go back to the remark that Kathy Fuentes made, that you can't change the plan. And then she followed it up with saying that you'll have to amend the plan. Yes, you can change the plan. It's a harder process. It's like refi-ing your house. It's going to take some time, it's going to cost you some money, and it's not easy, and it's a headache, but you can do it. And this whole thing of what we're trying to do and increase housing for purchase and help develop or help overcome this gap that we have as an entire state that other people are struggling with, I would like to challenge Councilmember Hare to look at our house before we look at the state. Because the reason our developers can't bring it across the line is due to regulatory uncertainty. The minute a developer purchases a property, they are losing money. We had someone here that took two years, and they, and you, and we gave them property. And it's a great project, and I'm excited about that project, but two years. There are other states that have 90 day shot clocks. There are other cities within Utah that have 90 day shot clocks. We can remove the friction. If you're ever trying to improve a system, it's not adding things to the system, it's removing the friction. And regulatory uncertainty is the biggest number one thing that a developer will not participate in because they're purchasing money, or they're purchasing land, and then all of a sudden the rules change. We've seen this here where people have gone through the process like that the developers for On the River with the two-year project. The, my, the, the goalposts kept getting moved. If, we don't have to pay developers to come in here and partner with us. We are land rich. We need to start treating developers that are qualified as the partners they can be to help us overcome our housing challenges. Thank you.
Any other comments? Online or here? Yes, regular comments. Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, you're doing great.
Teresa Holmes, Ogden resident. What I'm thinking about is how in the heck do we push for accreditation for our museums now that we have the land, the collections, and the building, you know? And also, I'm with Visit Save Union Station. We have over 2,000 members now, and we're all for saving our museums and our artifacts. If we're not careful, Salt Lake's new museums will end up with half of our collections. You wait and see, you know? It's the way it is. And also, Bill Dodge wrote this. It says, "My question to the legislature is why is Ogden's already existing Utah State Railroad Museum approved by the same state legislature not, not, not receiving any funding for Ogden? Where are, where are our state legislatures on this? Are they voting to allocate millions for a new Salt Lake City museum while ours fight for life? Didn't Salt Lake City just get a new natural history museum? Is Ogden even taking this up with our legislatures? Why are they doing, what are they doing for Ogden in our pursuit to save our, one of our most historic places in Utah? Indeed, indeed, in the Western U.S.?" You know, this is pretty damn important, darned important. I'm kind of tired. I've been up since six. I worked that home show over at the Leighton Hills, you know, Leighton Legislature. Well, anyway, I've had a hell of a day, heck of a day. And I decided to come down here anyway because I'm going to beat the drum until it won't beat anymore. So where are we on this? We need accreditation to get the big grants. So why are we messing around with developers building a new building unless it's going to be big enough to hold all of our collections? And from what I understand, it would only hold three cars. How do we enlarge this and make it a bigger pursuit? You know? And after 21 years as a docent in the museums and over 7,000 hours, I have a right to speak up, especially when I was told they were going to embrace my hours, they forced me to sign NLC. And I did talk to RSVP about this, they can't do that. You know, I mean, they were at the meeting today too. I mean, there's a lot of nasty stuff going around. And locking Lee Whitten out of his office was one of the meanest things I've ever heard, you know? So if they can't treat us better, who in the heck wants to volunteer with that bunch?
Thank you, Teresa.
Yeah.
Looks like we have Linda online.
Hi, my name is Linda Sanchez. I do want to say thank you. You know, I am not a homeowner, and I see the, you know, the growing need for nurses and stuff like that, but most nurses on a single budget really can't afford to purchase a home at this point. And I am not, I, I would prefer not to be in high density housing stacked on top of each other. And so I do appreciate any, any opportunities that you guys can provide to the working folk here in Ogden to try to have the American dream. Another thing that I did want to bring up as a concern with us getting so much high density, you know, the trails are such a, a great stress add, you know, outlet for everyone. One of the concerns I have is I know somebody that was up on the trail and that there was a problem, I don't know if the trails not marked well or whatnot, but they were threatened with a big knife and a big dog. And the police were called, and a police report was made, and nobody ever got back. And I find this to be a problem because, you know, we'll not only have the regular, our, our regular public citizens here, not only that, we get a lot of people that, up on the hills that are not from Utah. And it does kind of concern me that maybe either the trails, the trail isn't marked well, or there's just somebody that is crazy that just likes to harass people. But that is the concern that I hope can be addressed, and I yield back the rest of my time.
Thanks, Linda. Anyone else here in the room? Now, we'll go online to David Timmerman.
Hi, this is Dave. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm calling for one issue only, which has to do with our signing the agreement for the Clean Renewable Energy Program. I, I know that the mayor, of course, is, is not running for reelection. Everyone knows that. And I appreciate the fact that we're all still hanging in there so far. I really hope that we can have a majority of the council and the mayor sign on to this agreement. It's critical. It's been four years in the process. And why is it important? Why is it critical? Because we don't have other alternatives to try to move ourselves forward toward a better way of producing energy, not just for Ogden, but throughout the state and, and worldwide. And so I would ask all of you to please continue this good work of trying to finalize the process, which we have worked for, gosh, three and a half, four years now. A lot of people have fallen by the wayside, but I know that almost everyone supports the idea of clean renewable energy. I, I would urge the mayor and the city council to continue, and I would especially ask Mayor Caldwell to consider this and, and do what I believe is the right thing, of course, which is to sign that agreement. Thank you very much for your time this evening and, and for the work that you all put in. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Come on in. Welcome.
Thank you. Emily Beely? I wasn't, I didn't come with a comment to make, but this last comment reminded me of discussion on this topic, which I recall was that a dollar amount hadn't been identified as to how much this would cost. So has that been resolved? Has that been identified?
I'm not sure which issue you're talking about.
This renewable energy plan that the gentleman was encouraging, signing off on, joining on...
No, there's not been any definitive amount yet.
So is that something that you are expecting before you're forced to make a decision?
I want to make sure you use up your time if you have additional questions, and then we will respond.
Okay. I guess, let me think of all the additional questions I might ask in response to your answer. I don't know. Yeah, I guess I'd like to hear your answer before I, I mean, like, what's the process? Are you, is it possible that you would sign on to something without knowing how much it would cost? I guess that's a question.
And right now, the agreement would just be to be joining the agreement that will go forward to the commission, and then we get the final information later.
Ooh. So that's like committing to something without knowing?
No, we're not committing to actually signing the final resolution. We're just committing to continue in the process.
I see. Okay. Well, I know fiscal responsibility is such a big, important consideration, you know, as a city council member. I'm sure that that's really important to you. But I guess, you know, I'm not an expert on renewable energy either, but from what I know, from what I have heard, you know, it's like, what have you heard? I'm just concerned that there's a lot of non-renewable energy that's needed to make renewable energy. You know, it's all about being clean, you know, how much of the fossil fuel energy has to be used to make all these batteries and other things that are supposedly more clean. And I didn't know if you guys, I heard about how Ogden City could even own its own nuclear plant. I heard that at one of the mayoral or city council events that I went to, you know, one of the audience members said, you know, "We could own one as a city. They're not that expensive, and they create clean energy." Isn't that shocking? Like, I can see your face.
Yeah, because I just went to a presentation recently, and that's, I don't know about that.
Yeah.
I'd like to know more about it, yeah.
Yeah, so I will commit to reaching out to that person who said that and seeing if they will send you specifically, and then you can forward it to the other people. Because I think it's often the case that we don't know what we don't know, as has been said earlier this evening. And if that's a possibility, it seems like it might be something you guys would want to consider.
Great. And if you reach out to me, I'd be happy to catch you up on the process for creatum. And if you reach out to me, I'd be happy to catch you up on the process for Korea too.
Super, thank you.
Emily? Yeah, she said her name. Yeah, you said your name, right? Yeah, like, I know your name, but I also think you said, yeah. Thank you, though. Okay, looks like that's all the public comments. Um, let's see, well, Linda, I don't know if you're still on, but I definitely would recommend if you would reach out to me or someone else with a specifics about that incident, we can find out more about it. I mean, I'm not the person that can resolve it, but I can connect you with the right person. Um, let's see. Any other comments that council members have in relation to the comments? Yeah. Mayor Caldwell, oh, Mayor Caldwell, he left? Okay, any comments from the administration?
No, no comments tonight, thank you.
And from council members?
I was just going to respond to Emily's comments. So I haven't talked to anybody that's not supportive of clean air. How we achieve that is a lot of different opinions, but I've expressed my support for clean air, but I've expressed my reservation for committing unquestionably in supporting Korea because we don't know the cost, period. I don't think it's sound decision-making to commit to programs before knowing what the cost is. So the next step doesn't require that we commit to the program, but it does commit that we take that step to get to the cost, and then we will have opportunities to step out if that's necessary based on the cost. Am I getting that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, for, for me, the cost is paramount, so, thanks for sharing that.
Sure. Any other comments? Okay, I'd be happy to take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Did we want to have executive director comments and, I mean, council member comments?
Yep, that's what we were just doing.
Did the mayor do?
The mayor's left.
Okay, I just must have missed some.
Motion to adjourn.
Did you have any comments?
No.
So a motion from council member Lopez, a second from council member higher, on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, we'll just reset for our meeting. I don't know if the scouts are required to say for another meeting.
They're probably riveted by all of this discussion.
I don't know why, could you the badge? Do you have to say for a certain amount of time or just one of the meetings? So we have one more meeting after this one, so.
I know it's all worst case.
This will make you better, scouts, I promise. This will make you better.
And doing the pledge, even though it was embarrassing. Oh, good?
Same, same concept.
Okay, welcome, everyone, to the October 17th, 2023 Special Redevelopment Agency Meeting. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present with the exception of Vice Chair Ritchie. First up, we're going to consider approval of minutes, the special meeting of November 1st, 2022, Board Member Lopez.
Yes, meetings are, the minutes are correct and I make a motion, motion to approve them.
Second.
We have a motion from Board Member Lopez, a second from Board Member Blair to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And now we're going to consider going into a closed session.
Chair, I would make a motion that we adjourn into a closed executive session for one of the requirements listed.
Second.
We have a motion from Board Member Blair and a second from Board Member White to go into a closed session. This is a roll call vote.
Board Member Blair?
Aye.
Board Member Higher?
Aye.
Board Member Lopez?
Aye.
Board Member Nadolsky?
Aye.
Board Member White?
Aye.
Chair Treberka?
Aye, and that passes. And I should just let the audience know, we don't expect this to be a long closed session, and we will be coming back into the chambers for item number four.
Will you remind the people?
Oh, the people online, I apologize, if you're on the Zoom meeting, what you'll need to do at this time is leave the Zoom meeting and then, I don't know how they will know when to rejoin.
I don't even...
Um, well, I apologize about that.
So they, they won't be able to get in while it's locked, so they could just try every little bit.
Or they could be monitoring on the Facebook page, would that work? Okay, so, sorry, we didn't think this through before we decided to do it this way. So if you're online, if you wouldn't mind signing off of the Zoom meeting, and then you can monitor by the Facebook feed to see when we come back, and then you can rejoin the Zoom meeting if you would like to make comment. The challenge is, is once you, if you don't leave the meeting for the closed session, you'll get kicked out and you will not be able to rejoin from that number or that account. So that's the challenge. So please leave the meeting now if you'd like to be able to rejoin when we resume in chambers. Okay. Agenda out, I apologize. Okay. The next item we have on the agenda is a report from administration, the proposed real estate purchase contract at 1781 Gibson Avenue.
Chair, if I may, I'd like to make a motion that we table this item to November 7th inasmuch as we don't have a full council or board, I guess is the right word.
Second.
Ooh, that's so close. We have a motion by Board Member Higher, second by Board Member Lopez to table this item to November 7th. Is that a voice vote? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes. Any comments from the executive director? There's nobody over there. Mayor, would you like to make any comments on behalf of the executive director?
No comments today, thank you.
Thank you, sorry. And board members, would you like to make any comments? Nope. And so I'd be happy to take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion from Board Member Higher, second from Board Member Blair to adjourn on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and thank you all so much for sticking around.